Welcome to the Wednesday, June 4th, 2025, meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. Thurston County Planning Commission is a resident advisory committee of the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as the Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Ordinance Amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners, the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Community members are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. Public comment is welcome during the planning, excuse me, during the public communication section of each meeting and during any scheduled public hearings. Let's start tonight with introductions and we'll do it differently tonight and start to my right with our newest Planning Commission member.
Hi, I'm Yvonne Miller and I am representing District One in Olympia.
Barry Halverson, District Two, Yale, Washington.
Kevin Pestner, District Five.
Eric Casino, I serve at large but live in the Lacey UGA.
Scott Nelson, District Four.
Alan Bartlett, District Five, live in Temler.
And Joel Hansen, District Three.
Online.
Oh, and Commissioner Kaiser, online.
Hello there, Sandy Kaiser, District Three.
Thank you. Thanks. Excellent. And we have an agenda in front of us. There's been a suggestion to amend the agenda slightly to put items six and seven ahead of item four. If that is agreeable to the commissioners, I would make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second is?
All in favor?
Aye.
We have an agenda. Next is the approval of the minutes from the May 21st, 2025 meeting. Is everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Their approval?
I'd move to approve the meeting minutes of our May 21st, 2025 meeting and accept the audio as the official meeting record.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
I abstain. I wasn't present.
Perfect. Very good. Okay, next we have on our agenda, public communication. For those participating on Zoom, please choose the raise your hand option to address the Planning Commission. It will be promoted to a panelist when it is your turn to speak and be seen. To be seen, please turn on your camera. If you're dialing in, press star nine to raise your hand. We will start with the folks in the room who have signed up to give public communication. And first on the list is Tom Crawford. Please come to the podium, state your name and address. And you have the floor, Tom.
Thank you very much. I'll try to speak up because I'm aware that sometimes the person at this podium doesn't get heard on the recording and online and so forth so well. So I'll try to not use quite my outside voice, but almost. So I live at 10016, I look at Guyver West. That's out in the county. It's in the Carleyan Beach area. And I'm here to talk, I've distributed to a couple of the commission members and a couple of staff members some supplementary comments to sort of reconsider some of the earlier comments we had on the climate chapter of the Comprehensive Plan. And so that's, I'd just like to let folks know that. And I'll go through a few of those until my time has expired here. And so like one of those is, well, there are several of them in the transportation arena. For example, to add a climate implementation item that builds on a previously cited policy item CL-2.C dot four. To simply say that, be a little more specific about providing guidance to fleet purchasing and management staff that sets, that could set electric vehicles as the standard for replacing current vehicles and determine and provide additional budget for those purchases as may be required. And we think hopefully it wouldn't be required very much, but just to make sure that all the pieces are in place so that those purchases can happen. Another item. Add again to the implementation plan, building on the following CL-2.C dot five. Something that along the lines of work with environmental and other nonprofit organizations to develop and implement public awareness campaigns, increase consumer awareness about electric vehicle options and incentives for their use and purchase. And then we provide some samples of what might be included in those campaigns. For example, presentation to local groups, EV displays at community events. I'm working with Thurston Climate Action Team and we have over the past few years done frequent sort of EV, pop-up EV shows for community events. And so things like that could be very helpful. And then also I think it'd be important to identify the need for various kinds of assistance that would be needed by local community organizations. Staff assistance. So again, I'll just refer to that and thank you very much for your help. I also want to say I really appreciate the time and attention you're spending on this climate action related material. I think it's, I mean, it shows the value that you're placing on it. And that really aligns obviously with the value of my, values of my organization, Thurston Climate Action. So thank you again very much.
Thank you, Tom.
I will, I will just note really quick that we did receive that document. I saw it in our, in our packet about a half an hour ago.
Okay. Is there any way we could print out some hard copies for people to look at as we go through that in the later portion of the meeting?
Yeah, how many?
I'd love to have one in front of me.
I saw it before I came in.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Next on our list to speak is Betsy Norton.
Hi, my name is Betsy Norton. I live at 1405 Everene Park Drive Southwest in Olympia. Dear Planning Commissioners, I did a little reading, sorry. I did a little reading regarding asphalt plants and cement plants and biomass mills, all three of which are conceivably industries which would be allowed in an RRI zoned area. I also visited the Black River south of the BLQ property, places where I could access it. And I found it full of thick wetlands, a robust river, many species of birds, and I'm assuming even other fauna, including salmon, Oregon spotted frogs, and mud minnows, which are listed. I don't think this rezone at Black Lake Quarry to RRI is a good idea. It's right next to Protected Habitat for Listred Species, where there are mud minnows, OSF, beaver, and salmon, and water that flows into the Chehalis, which so many people are trying to preserve. Air pollutants from industrial operations, including volatile organic compounds, which are intrinsic to asphalt production, and particulates VOCs from biomass, which is wood pellet facilities, would penetrate the wetlands and flow over the river. Water pollutants from industrial operations, including the highly toxic Portland cement commonly used to make concrete, are likely to escape containment during an atmospheric river or a series of them that we expect from climate change. Black Lake Quarry is in a low-lying area in a flood plain. So it's vulnerable to flooding, which would release any of these new industrial contaminants to the nearby protected habitat. I believe the risk of harm to this important protected habitat is high. And all of these more intensive industrial uses will increase greenhouse gases emitted by the county. Please don't add that to that risk by rezoning it to RRI for some nebulous more intensive industrial use. A plethora of bird species, insects, and aquatic animals, including these listed species, will be better protected without this rezone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norton. Paris, did you sign in with me here?
Yeah, I signed in.
Come, come on up.
Okay. Hi, I'm Paris McCloskey. I live at 5226 Puget Road, Northeast Olympia, Washington. And I am here as the representing Thurston Climate Action Team as the community organizer. Tom already introduced the document to you all that we worked on, revisions of the, our kind of comments in the climate crosswalk to try to translate that a little bit better. So I will just kind of pick up where Tom left off. So I worked on several items and I will skip over the ones for which we don't have comments or revisions and just go into the ones where we do have some revisions. So for TCMP Action W3.1, our revised recommendation is to add IP-CL-28 to support lot and researching and implementing nitrous oxide mitigation strategies and strategies to avoid or reduce noxious nitrous oxide emissions in wastewater processing and present findings and cost versus benefit analysis to policymakers to determine what changes should be made. And then for TCMP Action W4.4, we, the revised recommendation is to add to IP-CL-46 or dash 46 to provide waste audits for business owners and education on practices and decrease waste, such as composting, recycling, and reuse. For TCMP Action W4.10, our recommendation is to add to IP-CL-45 to expand current food waste education programs such as Thurston County's Waste Less Food Program. For TCMP Action W6.6, we would like to add to IP-CL-48 to provide free technical assistance to local businesses and reducing carbon intensity of their supply chains. For TCMP Action A1.2, our recommendation there is to change this policy statement to be more general and use specific languages as an IP item. That language change in addition for CL-8.B dot one is to both provide regenerative agriculture and other practices that reduce greenhouse gas emissions, prioritizing outreach to historically underserved communities, end quote. For TCMP Action A2.1, I'm running out of time, so I'll just say this is all included in the document and I will be here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Paris. Would anybody else in the room like to address the Planning Commission tonight? Yeah?
Sure, yeah, I was prepared, but I will, I'm going to introduce myself.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Mike Parsons, I'm with Black Lake Quarry. Not prepared, I had another person called in for me, but first of all, I want to thank the commission, every one of you. I do watch the commission meetings. And this is the front lines of all the activity that goes on in Thurston County. It's an important, important role. So needs, I think, participation more from other people to make it really work and get good comments, you know, make your job a little bit easier as well. I don't have a lot to say except for maybe some more, the reason we're coming in with the rural resource industrial is we, we looked at Black Lake Quarry on the Little Rock pit. It's 281 acres, of which there's approximately 14 acres of wetlands on the site. We look at what is going on in the, in the industry. And that is ag-based businesses, timber-based industry, and you know, the mining industry. For example, we, we currently ship and process sand and gravel. We crush sand and gravel, this pit's been around since 1977. And we will ship sand to a, to a paper manufacturer on the other side of town. We'll, we'll ship rock, bag rock, all these different products. Under RRI, that would allow all that be onsite and not basically offsite. And we ship probably 40, 50 truckloads in a day to a mottment facility, which would bring it back to us. With the timber industry, we've been contacted, I've been working with Mike Hade at EDC. There's a trust manufacturer that's been here for 40 years, who is completely out of space to relocate. He's, he's being asked to move on. They cannot find a site that's contiguous, that's large enough to relocate to. So they may be looking at different county, Lewis County, for example. There's just a lot of need for those types of industry. That if we're going to support ag, if we're going to support mineral and timber, we need to support the infrastructure as well. And so that's why this, I think, is a very important piece. And I was surprised to find out as, as we, we studied this. I didn't do it personally, but we hired somebody to do it. In Thurston County, currently, there's less than 50 acres of developable RRI zone land in Thurston County. We sent in a map with the study earlier this afternoon, so you could see that. There is not anywhere, there is nowhere for any of these businesses to relocate. The other thing is in the industrial land study, if you remember reading through that, this is a large contiguous piece, it's a current mine, very active mine. And there was reference to making rural industrial in a rural place if you have water and you have utilities that aren't part of a city or municipality. I have a huge water right out there in Little Rock. We have our onsite septic and we can service everything per the industrial estate, which was a recommendation onsite. So that's all I have, wasn't prepared, but it's nice to meet you all.
Thank you. Okay, we will shift to online public comment. If there is anybody. So we have one hand raised so far, okay. Mr. Toyer, you are being promoted to a panelist and you should be able to address us shortly.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, doing this from my car outside my son's school tonight because he's got a program. Appreciate your time this evening, Commissioners. David Toyer, Atlantic and Economic Development Consultant, and I'm working with Black Lake Quarry on their Little Rock Rural Resource Industrial Zone proposal. We submitted a letter this afternoon, kind of in advance of the public hearing, but I wanted to give you guys an opportunity to look at some of the information and analysis that we've done in further support of this proposal. At the end of the day, this Little Rock site is an existing active mining operation. And there is some opportunities to utilize some of the site as the mining is completed for other uses than, than mining. And those uses would be associated with resource industries that are located or need access to the rural areas. It fits the designation criteria in the comp plan for where rural resource industrial should be put. I note there's a, the comment earlier tonight about the habitat and wetlands and those sorts of things. All of those things were previously analyzed as a part of the existing mining operation. So we know where the wetlands are, we have existing buffers and protections in place. And that still would require in the future, if we came in under the rural resource industrial designation with an actual project, which there's no project today, but we're trying to provide you with some examples of what, what that could be. But in the future, you'd still have to do a project-specific SEPA relative to that additional use. And things would have to be evaluated further and all necessary permits obtained. Really, at the end of the day, it's, it's a site that's, you know, being utilized for a very intense land use activity. Mining is about as intensive land use activity as it gets. It's not like permanent structure per se, but it's a permanent modification of the landscape. And we believe there's some opportunities here to utilize some portions of this site for rural industries that are related to rural resource uses. And it makes a lot of sense. This is proximate to some major arturials and the interstate. And we actually have the onsite water, the onsite septic, and available power and other utility services that would be able to handle these things in a rural area at a rural scale. And that really is, is, is what kind of is laid out in the comp plan as a goal. And then just really quickly kind of wrapping this up, as Mike said, we've done some analysis of other rural resource industrial zone areas in the county. And while there is quite a bit that is vacant, there is good documentation that shows that those areas are not developable because of wetlands, because of geologic concerns, as far as the ground can't be developed and/or they don't have access to utilities. And it wouldn't be economically feasible for those sites to get utilities. So with that, I appreciate your time this evening and look forward to a future public hearing on this where we can provide additional information and answer your questions.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Is anyone else online wishing to address the Planning Commission tonight? Please raise your hand if so. Not seeing any hands raised, so going once, going twice, three times, and okay.
Scroll really quick, just for the names that are visible there.
Usually the hands pop up at the top.
Yeah. Okay. That is the conclusion of item number three, our agenda. So with the modifications to our agenda, we are going to go to item number six.
Eric, before we get too far in this, I know that Mr. Crawford said that he had sent in a letter and I had gotten that in my email, but then Mr. Sawyer said that he sent one in and I, I hadn't seen that one yet, so.
I don't think I have either.
Can you resend that?
I I did receive it, it came to my email directly and passed it along to the admin folks who've been sending those things out to you guys, but it came in like right at five, so I think it just hasn't had a chance to go out yet, I'm not sure.
I think my PCAT comments came in at like 5:30.
Yeah, let me.
I have that in my email and I'm happy to send that out to the Planning Commission. I can forward that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do, does anybody want me to run and print a physical copy?
I'll just wait to read it later.
Yeah, that's okay.
Hello, Planning Commissioners, Anna Rodriguez, Associate Planner. I am back again, not for comp plan, but for permit review process update, following up on the May 21st, 2025 work session that we had. So today, like I mentioned, it's a follow-up. There were two outstanding items from last work session, deciding upon the threshold for SEPA exemptions for single-family developments outside of the urban growth area, as well as setting a public hearing. I also recognize that the packet given to you all did not include the code without the appeals for the sake of saving paper, that's the reason why. In the memo, I indicated all of the sections and subsections that would be removed and all of the tables would be updated as well. Just to reiterate what was mentioned at the last work session, the Planning Commission requests that the board stay in the appeals process. So we're going to bring forward two code packets so that they can compare, this is what the code looks like, with the board remaining in the appeals, which would shorten this packet significantly. And then a second packet that includes the appeals removed, so that the board can see the Planning Commission recommendation code package and then the changes that they've requested in the second code package. So it was mentioned, it was discussed at the last work session. Then it would be helpful to see a comparison of where other counties have their SEPA exemption thresholds. So I have Thurston Counties here as it stands right now and our proposed changes. You can see the other counties. Several counties do just adopt the WAC by reference. And the WAC numbers are the nine and four for single family. And then I believe it's four for a single family in the city, or nine, excuse me. So this was the, I mentioned Abby Adams in current planning, the senior planner, Rockstar. She had done this analysis previously that was used to help inform this code package. And so these were the counties that we analyzed because they're typically the ones that we look at when we're looking at what Thurston County does in comparison to others because of proximity and also just general size, how they function and whatnot. So we have this. Any questions? Because I also have slide, and the cities. It was discussed that this would be helpful for our jurisdictional partners. They are in the process of updating these, however, they have not yet drafted and published their new development code for middle housing requirements as are part of the comp plan process right now. That should be coming out in the summer, but they are looking at these and changing them as well. So while right now it kind of looks like a stark difference between Thurston County and the cities, it's just that Lacey adopts the WAC by reference, we'll see if they continue to do that when their development code draft comes out. And then the other two major cities have not yet released draft code. So this is how it stands in each of the municipalities code currently.
Questions?
I will say, I think it's worth noting that we're just ahead of the game.
The homish is ahead of the game.
Yes, we're much ahead, but locally we are.
Do we have any information about when they changed this part of their code and what may have happened since then? If it's having the effect that they desire?
We pull the ordinance here, this is the homish code. No, I'm saying look, it's the homish kind of code for the ordinance here.
It may be too soon to know that there's been an impact, but. Yeah, I think ultimately really what it comes down to is the availability of utilities. Even though the number may say 20, realistically, we can all see that there's no way that they could do 20, unless there's a creative mechanism through some sort of conservation subdivision or something along those lines. A standard five acre, which would be really hard to come by because there's not many massive lots anymore, would be a pretty difficult task to overcome. But I think the big one is going to be within the urban growth areas and bringing us into alignment with the cities. And ultimately, I think the Planning Commission does have the opportunity. We could even just shift back from having it listed out explicitly and just reference WAC. That is another option that the Planning Commission could consider in addition to the revised numbers that you were talking about last meeting or the ones that we had originally proposed.
Are we expecting that the cities are going to just go with what WAC says?
It's hard to tell, WAC is outdated. As it stands right now, it has been updated to indicate maximums, but their numbers that they still list for single family and for rural, they don't call out the UGAs. They only talk about cities and counties. And so that's a distinction that the different municipalities have made, but it's still right now, 197, 11, 800, just says nine or four. And then it references barns and schools and parking lots. I don't even think it, it does not include marijuana production, which we have in our section.
I will, I kind of like building off of that. I think in recent, using the WAC is just recently, the state has been adjusting the SEPA exemptions quite often. I think they've done it in the last two sessions, even just to small pieces. And so just keeping up with that, we'd have to make a code amendment each time. And I think that's probably the rationale with the cities and the other counties that reference by WAC is they don't have to change anything, it just updates accordingly whenever they make a change.
Is there actually a staff recommendation on this one?
I, we discussed last time, or you all discussed, for a whole pride family in the UGA, limiting it to eight or 20, 20, if it specified that they're clusters. As far as the staff recommendation, I do not have one.
But this is not a decision we actually have to make now, we should probably make this decision.
It's just a matter of, for the public hearing draft, if you would like the draft to stay at 25 and then we hear. hear public comment and that inform what you wish that number to be or fearful strongly about. Deciding softly on a number now and I tweak this draft and that public hearing draft reflect that number and then that could still change with your reflection or recommendation, excuse me.
Looking for a raised hand?
I'd like to see what the public hearing shows.
Okay.
And I, I think having that that exemption number high will drive more public engagement, so. Even that number high is just fine.
Commissioner Kaiser, do you have anything to add at this time?
Nope, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay. I think we're um ready for a motion.
Good. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing on the development code docket, item A thirty one, review process. Annual update for July second, twenty twenty five at seven PM or sooner after.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fantastic. I will get all of those noticing documents prepared. The legal ad will go out next week and this Wally Valley News as they issue their paper on Thursday, so it'll be next week. Um, we'll return July second with CIPA staff report, all those things. Um. If anyone has questions in the meantime, you have my email, but thank you.
Thank you both. Uh, okay, that takes us back to item number four on our agenda. Which is work session number one on the Black Lake Corey land use amendment and rezone.
Do you think I need to be from notice panelist to put my? Oh, and while we're doing that, I do, this came out in an email, but it was this afternoon, so I just wanted that maybe you can just pass those around. Um, bring hard copies. This is just a visual aid. So it's just a tricky format to get actually into the presentation. Um, but one side is the comparison of the current zone and the requested zone and the other side is comparison of the comprehensive plan locational um criteria for each of them. So sorry.
How did that go? It's great. There, are you gonna talk to us about the uh outcomes of the open house?
Yeah. Yes, um, we will talk about that. Um. So yeah, there's a discussion of the conversations that we had there and then um also as an attachment to the staff report that you guys received are all the written comments that we have so far. Uh, and again, I think Maya was getting that last one out uh that we got this afternoon. There you go. Okay. So this is the Black Lake Corey Little Rock Rezone and Land Use Amendment. Uh, this is a request. Uh, it is, this is an applicant initiated rezone request, meaning that property owner has asked for this change and it would affect the comprehensive plan. So the Black Lake Corey Little Rock Rezone is a request from a property owner to rezone. It's about two hundred and seventy acres at forty seven, forty one, eighty eighth Avenue Southwest from rural one dwelling for twenty acres to rural resource industrial. The current zone allows for mostly residential and resource uses. And the proposed new zone primarily allows industrial uses that support or rely on rural resources. With some provisions for industrial uses, which I'll discuss a little later. Uh, the site doesn't meet the locational requirements for the non-resource related industrial uses that can be allowed in that zone. This is a map of the site location. Uh, it's near Little Rock Road and Eighty Eighth Avenue. It also is alongside the Black River, Black River Refuge. Uh, the purple area on this is the area being requested to rezone.
And I'm taking it that the blue area in the middle is the wetland area?
Uh, yes, this is a water body on site, but I believe it is kind of surrounded as part of the mining operation. Um, it, this is not necessarily uh um, I think it would show up as a mapped wetland, but I don't have like the details on the environmental nature of that blue area.
Another question along the same lines, um, talking about that refuge and looking at that map, is that what's the shaded green?
Yes, so the Black River Refuge is the shaded green area. Um, and we have some discussion on that later in the presentation, but it's um, yeah, it's a natural refuge. It's actually part of the broader like Billy Frank Junior uh refuge.
This documents also reference a Black River corridor. Is that the same as the designation of the refuge or different?
Language that comes out of the code specifically, so I think it just refers to those areas that are uh sort of part of the ecosystem of the Black River and its surrounding areas.
Thank you.
Yeah. So the surrounding areas of the site, like we saw on that map, the to the west there is the Black River Refuge. Um, the area to the northeast of the site is primarily single family residential. Um, a good number of the folks that came out to our open house live in that area. And um, the area around the south and southeast are mostly undeveloped, that kind of natural area. There's uh some agriculture uses in the area as well. Here's a, this is the aerial image, so you can kind of get a picture of where those undeveloped um and residential areas are, so the residential areas are mostly up in um on eighty eighth here. And then off on Little Rock.
Well, I'm assuming that pond is the water resource that uh Mr. Parsons was referring to as water on site that they use for their process in there.
It's a pit pond.
Yeah.
We use to wash our rock with.
Yeah, okay.
We can move it around.
And that's what I was think, thinking it was not a naturally occurring material.
The main entrance is is down on the very south end.
It's on the south end, yes.
So on this map, where is the wetland area?
Um.
We're just told.
Yeah, this, so there's that little pond that shows up on this. Um, and this isn't, this map doesn't show our GIS wetlands layer. Um.
Is there one later that shows it?
Uh, not in this slideshow, but we can provide that. Um, we, yeah, a future conversation.
It's a little weird that that purple is totally differentiated from the green of the refuge, but go to the next slide. And it looks like it's overlapping right there.
It's like there's, there looks like there's a very thin barrier between where that water currently is. I know that it's um, and the wetlands itself.
Uh, right. So, yeah, the refuge is the area outside of the property, the, the, the refuge itself is the delineated like park and natural area. Uh, the public lands uh is outside of the site, but it is directly adjacent to it.
And it looks to me that part of the corridor is actually on the land.
Yeah, there it, there is a contiguous natural area that extends onto the land that hasn't been developed that kind of touches into these corners here. Yeah, so under the requested zoning, uh various resource related industrial uses would be allowed on this site and it may be developed. Um, as far as like actual structures on the site in particular, because mining is intensive, but as a higher intensity than its current state. Uh, the requested zoning has potential impacts to surrounding neighborhoods. There's a potential for traffic noise, environmental impact. Um, and it would provide commercial activity in the area, support rural resource uses. Um, and all these factors, especially the impacts, would be considered during the environmental review period. Um, both for this rezone request and for any development that is proposed if it were rezoned or if the use on the site changed. Um, and it would also same environmental review process would apply if the current use was expanded beyond what it um currently is approved to do.
Good. There's just a point clarification. Where is the primary access point to this?
It is this right here.
Okay.
This driveway, if you would see off the map, goes south and winds around a little bit and then actually connects directly to Little Rock Road.
Okay, so that residential area to the northeast up there doesn't connect into the thing, and so there wouldn't be any traffic coming out of there through that residential area?
Um, that was one of the concerns that we heard, um, and I will talk about a little bit later too, about from the residents is making sure because that actually does physically connect, but this is not currently an approved access point for the mine.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Brother. Um, I guess I I am concerned um both uh as, as was pointed out in public comment about uh the increased likelihood of significant weather events and how they would affect this, this uh this project. Um, and a lot of what we've been talking about with the, with the longer term plan, when it comes to our planning prerog- like prerogatives is like how these areas are developing over time um in terms of increased uh housing pressure and increased climate pressure, especially with that wetland right there. Um, I'm wondering about the utility of approving something that is like itself going to be or already going to be a significant um uh negative, a, a, a significant impact uh on uh like with, with any acceleration of any of the trends that we're seeing, we're, we're going to be seeing a lot of, a lot of potential damage from that. I'm also noting that in um the very first RRI requirement on here, it says uh capable of supporting industrial development with minimal environmental constraints, no significant effects on surface or groundwater level and free of critical areas. I don't see how it applies now um to, to that criteria, much less how it would apply under any of the future and future intensive uh uh uses that we're discussing.
Yeah, so actually related to that, my next point of discussion here for the site analysis, we talked about access a little bit. Um, and yeah, it's this southern area is what's currently approved for site access. Actually, as part of their current five year mine review permit, the applicant has been instructed to ensure there's a sign on Eighty Eighth Avenue, and that was a concern we heard at the, the public um open house as well. Um, so Eighty Eighth Avenue is not an approved access point currently, uh and traffic impacts would be reviewed under any CIPA processes that applied to the site as well.
Is that a photograph of the Eighty Eighth Avenue entrance or is that just a?
No, that's just a nice picture.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
Very nice driveway.
Yeah.
Um, utilities for the site, uh, it's not part of any of our water sewer service areas, not part of a ULID. Um, it has septic and water on site. It's all served well and septic on site. Um, the environment for the site, so um per our geodata maps, the following critical areas are at least present or have buffers mapped onto the site, so steep slopes, frequently flooded areas, high groundwater hazard areas, shoreline areas, hydric soils, prairie soils, Mazzamah pocket gopher soils and areas, organ spotted frog areas, wetlands, fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. Uh, some noxious weed containment sites and critical, critical aquifer recharge areas. Uh, the presence of these features and any bearing on potential use of the site would be evaluated primarily during the land use application prob- process for any submitted proposals. So again, those are all um things that get reviewed for primarily at the time of actually designing a site and ensuring that when something gets developed on a site, it doesn't intersect with those areas in a way that's detrimental.
Commissioner Kaiser, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you so much. And this is so fascinating. And I'm thinking about how what we're seeing here is a collision between the federal designation of this land. This is, this is operated and uh protected by US Fish and Wildlife, part of the federal government. Uh, because it is such a remarkable site, it is um one of the most important ecosystems in Western Washington and the federal government has seen fit to invest quite a bit of money in protecting this space. Um, there's no public access here. This is all about habitat. It's about a lot of the rare and wonderful creatures that Betsy mentioned in her public comment. And yet we have um our own needs for employment and we have a site that has already been degraded, um, an opportunity to probably add some jobs to the depressed area of the county. I just think this is a really fascinating and difficult issue and um I'm, I'm, I'm not sure where I'm gonna vote and where I'm gonna be at the end of it.
Yeah, and I do have some information here from um the US Fish and Wildlife Service, so yes, it, well, the Black River Unit of the Billy Frank Junior Wildlife Refuge doesn't extend onto the site. It is adjacent to it on a lot of sites, the it shares a lot of boundaries uh with the site and the Black River Unit consists of a large complex mosaic of wetland riparian and upland habitats surrounding a low lying river. These diverse habitats include river and tributary channels, locally rare and unique bogs, shrub swamp, riparian forests, emergent marshes, seasonally flooded, non-native grassland, dry, non-native grassland and mixed forest. And within the boundary of the unit, there are spawning and rearing habitats and migration corridors for steelhead, cutthroat trout and coho and Chinook salmon. There are a hundred and fifty species of migratory birds, including waterfowl and songbirds are found in the area. The mud minnow, a state endemic and state species of concern lives in the, in the Black River Unit. Uh, and the organ spotted frog has very large populations uh in the Black River Unit, so that area is definitely very environmentally crucial.
So any development in this area would require a CIPA?
Yeah, I mean, I think just given the scale of the, the site and potential impact.
Uh, what came first, the operation of this mine or its current zoning designator?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't know, but um.
Because it seems weird to me that a mine would be zoned. One in residential one and twenty.
It was the mine.
Yeah.
One to twenty is whenever we did the rezone in two thousand.
It's like all the leftover stuff got residential one and twenty.
One, our one to twenty was a new zone that we invented.
And residential one twenty does have a special use process that allows for mines, because it does encompass a lot of our uh rural resource uses, so agriculture, forestry and mining are all.
Do we know why this was zoned R one and twenty instead of RRI from the very get go?
If the mine was first, it might have to do with the existing use, but.
I mean, if it was a mine before, before zoning came along and then zoning shows up and it was already a mine, it should have been RRI to begin with.
Uh, actually, RRI doesn't have the same level of provision for uh the actual like extractive uses like forestry, mining, those kind of on the ground uses as R one twenty is the zone that encompasses those. As like, it seems like because it's a primarily residential use that RRI would encompass mining more, but mining actually falls under more so R one twenty. Um. It's, it, R one twenty is an interesting zone.
That sounds weird.
It does.
Believe you, but that sounds.
Yeah, R one twenty is really interesting because also that R is for rural, not residential, which is something that surprised me about it.
Commissioner, we're gonna do some differentiation. Yes, here, this is a bunch of stuff that's not that.
Yeah, that's understanding, but when they first set the fess all up, why they would if you're gonna start putting stuff in buckets, I would have named the buckets differently.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, you just mentioned, uh, and we've heard many times, especially in this area about critical aquifer recharge. You have a map overlay of what the critical aquifer recharge area is compared to the site?
Uh, that would be in the map packet, I believe, that went out. I don't have it uh up on my screen currently, but that is available to you guys, but one of the attachments for the staff report had, um, and I know there are also questions about wetlands and other critical areas. There should be one for each of those.
Okay. Next question is similar. Uh, this says under the RRI requirement under natural resources section, that land has minimal potential for natural resource management or utilization. Um. Development. Yeah. Uh, do we know anything about soil types and the overlay of soil types to this land?
Just referenced.
Uh, we do have, um, that is a layer that we have in our data. Um, it is, I think, just kind of the basic like. map of where soil types are found. Um, I don't know that that one is in the map packet, but it's available on geodata. I'd be happy to make sure we have that for next time we talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just curious if this is an ideal spot for farming or pre-farming or other things. It'd be good to know whether it is or it's not.
It's not currently part of our, any of our like working lands designations, like long-term agriculture, forestry, um, so.
Sandy, hello. Uh, anyone else?
Some plants.
Yeah, and so with all that environmental stuff, um a SEPA determination will be prepared for this. I know, I believe Commissioner Casino at the um open house, you had asked for some more upfront SEPA information. We didn't have time for that, but we can uh before the next time we talk, keep diving deeper into uh the SEPA materials that were submitted, which you did also receive with the staff report. Um, so for public engagement so far, on April twenty eighth, we had an open house that was noticed through mail, email and online. Um, and we had a lot of really good conversations with folks who came to that. A lot of the concerns at that uh were related to uh the compatibility to neighboring residential spaces and open space uses. A lot of the that conversation was also just around the use that already exists. Um, residents uh talked a lot about the wildlife that uses the area, notably black bears uh walk around through there, which is cool. Especially on that eighty-eighth Avenue area. There was a concern with neighbors about the location of that eighty-eighth Avenue point that does physically connect to the site. Uh, it's not currently an approved access for the site. And again, that's something that is being managed under the mine review permit uh that is currently under review. Um, and then there was lots of great conversation about uh stuff we've talked about so far, concerned about the presence of those critical areas and the habitat for birds, fish and wildlife in the uh river area. Yeah.
Uh, you said that the the mining permit is currently under review?
Uh, so mines in Thurston County like this one go through a periodic review every five years. Um, and so, yes, we uh currently have in review there a a five-year mine review for this site. So looking at the uh zones, their uses, their purposes, next, so the purpose of the current zone, rural one unit per twenty acres um is to protect public health and safety by minimizing development and avoiding incompatible uses in environmentally sensitive and hazardous areas like the Black River Corridor. Um, and on parcels that are covered in critical areas. Uh, it also is to provide greater opportunities for protecting critical areas and creating open space corridors, provide low-density residential uses and provide space for agriculture, forestry, um, conservation and associated uses appropriate for rural areas, specifically things that don't require urban services. Uh, and it does provide through mine it for mining through a special use process specifically. Um, allowed types of uses include things like single-family dwellings, agriculture, forest, uh outdoor recreation. Uh, then there are some other things that are, and this is covered on that sheet you guys have as well. Um, there's a lot of accessory uses primarily related to things like single-family dwell- dwellings, agriculture and forest practices. Um, and then there are some other uses like schools, public facilities, churches, community centers um that are allowed through special use permits as well. So it's primarily those those very rural uses. Are the purpose of RRI, rural resource industrial, um is to provide for areas where industrial activities and uses that are dependent on agriculture, forest practice and mineral extraction can be located. This district allows uses that involve the processing, fabrication, wholesaling and storage of projects that are associated with those natural resource uses. And it also includes in the the code chapter for this, controls to provide freedom from nuisance creating features like noise, dirt, odor, sound, air and water pollution. Uh, and provisions for traffic circulation, buffers, landscaping requirements, things like that. Um, part of the intent of the zone is to allow for some of those industrial uses that support our resource industries. Um, and still protects the rural area from the impacts associated with those. Uh, so allowed uses include service and retail. That includes things like bars and restaurant, as well as like auto services or machine services. Um, farm uh and agriculture, forestry and mineral-related industrial uses uh and some other like uses that support that, things like farm management services, veterinary clinics. Um, but yeah, so it's it's got that kind of thing for agriculture. Um, lots of manufacturing uses for wood products and for stone products. Um, and then some accessory and other uses, things like caretaker living units, uh administrative and educational facilities that are alongside a permitted use. Uh, research labs for specifically related to rural resources um and public facilities and utilities. Uh, so this section of code does include uh some provisions for non-resource-related industrial uses. This site does not meet the locational criteria for those uses. So what we're not looking at for this site is things like just your general warehousing, storage, uh wholesaling that is unrelated to that mining, forestry, agriculture kind of rural resource thing. Uh, it does not meet those locational criteria.
Sorry, can you clarify that? Because this says mills and manufacturing of wood products and prefabricated buildings is included. You're saying this stuff is not. I believe some folks in favor of this said that uh possibility of a trust mill.
So, yeah, and this is like, some of this is a level of detail that hap- would happen at the time of the actual development proposal, but the difference here is um that this site would be able to support uses that relate directly and specifically to those rural resources. Um, so uh the, I can read more specifically. So the forestry ones are mills for producing wood products, the manufacturing of wood products and prefabricated wood buildings and components. Uh, so things that are kind of, if doing forestry or mining or agriculture is kind of the first phase of a resource, this zone is intended for that kind of second phase, turning it into like doing the things that directly relate to those rural um natural resource uses, as opposed to something like an e-commerce warehouse, which is what this is talking about.
So uh wood manufacturing and wood hill sale, wholesale warehousing would be possible here, but other types of large warehouses and manufacturing would not be.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, happy to clarify that. Okay, so um next is actually the backside of that sheet that you guys have, uh the comprehensive plan locational criteria uh for each zone. Uh, so for the requested zone, the comprehensive plan for both zones, the comprehensive plan lays out specific criteria for how and where it should be located. Things to consider about choosing locations for that zone. Um, so for the requested zone, rural resource industrial. Um, the general requirements are that the land would be capable of supporting industrial development with minimal environmental constraints. There's not gonna be a lot of effects on surface or groundwater and level and free of critical areas. Uh, the subject site does contain mapped critical areas and is upland of a shoreline designation in the Black River. And that shoreline designation does extend onto the subject site. Uh, so there is some, uh, you know, as we've already discussed, environmental um, critical areas present near the site, uh but we also have code in place that mitigates impacts to that kind of thing. So just uh for natural resources, um, yeah.
Commissioner, sorry. Go back to that one. So that last statement, level and free of critical areas, would you say that this lot is currently meets that criteria?
Um, I would say it has critical areas, honestly. Maped potential critical areas at least, and yeah.
Next question, can you go back to the public comment?
Sorry, to which slide?
Public uh open house, sorry.
Oh, yes.
So see a lot of concerns. Was, were there any comments about we need these kind of jobs?
Uh, not among the folks that I remember having conversations with.
Thank you.
Um, I think there's one or two of the written comments we've received that are broadly in favor. Um, yeah, so. So for the natural resources criteria for the rural resource industrial location, uh it's generally required that development should not detrimentally impact agriculture, forestry, aquaculture, other natural resource uses, uh and that should have minimal potential for natural resource management or utilization. Again, we know um that this site has been an active mine for some time and part of the nature of the request is that that natural resource use may become not as feasible anymore, so affect this locational criteria as well, as long as it's not a site suited for agriculture or anything. For
Sorry, back on that last slide. Uh, it's weird that we're talking about natural resources and it says it should not detrimentally impact those things, but it doesn't list mining, so. Uh, apparently we're not like, save our minds, but um my question here is about we've heard varying comments about the mine and the status of the mine, and it's been run for a long time. And it's nearing the end of its life and needs to move on. Do we have any information about that? Like, oh, this is still got capacity to be mined fifty percent more or it's done, it's been mined out ninety-eight percent. Do we know anything about any of that?
Uh, I don't off the top of my head, but I can.
At the open house, the folks there told us about how much more mining they can do in there, and I don't remember the numbers, but I'm sure it's gonna show up. My my feeling on it was that they were saying they had about twenty years left, but I could totally be wrong on that.
That's really helpful, thank you.
I'm sure we'll hear from them.
Yeah, I'll try and get some specific information on that before you give me any concern on anything. Um, natural resources, we did. So uh public services is the next section for the locational criteria. So for utilities, um, it's basically just that there's a level, appropriate level of rural utilities on the site uh that are accessible. Um, for this site, that would be the onsite septic and well water that they have access to. Uh, for transportation, um, the comprehensive co- comprehensive plan calls out uh rail access or proximity to a highway, which the site currently does have. Um, is is not adjacent to a highway and does not have rail access. There is an abandoned rail line that goes through the property. If you guys see that on the maps, that is not a functional rail line at this time. Um, it also calls out direct access to arterial or collector roads, uh which Little Rock Road is, which the site can access. Um, and no adverse traffic on impacts on surrounding rural areas, um, which again, there's something that is also covered under um development review.
Do we know anything about the abandoned rail line and who owns it and where?
Um, I can tell you from looking at the maps that it is a deadened branch up to Olympia and the it's, there's some at the top of it that is not abandoned, but it stops pretty far away from the site. I don't remember off the top of my head.
But it doesn't continue south and connect in?
Don't believe so from my memory of the map, but yeah.
Okay. Commissioner. I think we're mostly in agreement on transportation, that we think this is pretty pretty well meets the criteria. I know there's been some concerns that were stated previously about, you know, jamming up the busy intersections at the highway onramps. Uh, but other than that, it seems pretty, pretty good. But on utilities, I really question the water, the question about the water, there may be rights, there may be current usage of water and that there's certainly both surface and groundwater potential impacts. So the question of maybe the current use does not adversely affect surface or groundwater, but some of these potential uses certainly could. Obviously, that would come up during the processes for those, but uh, what more can we learn about what would or would not impact? Especially if it's a critical aquifer recharge area, what would affect groundwater?
Yeah, um, I think there's definitely some research that we can do before a decision is made. Um, looking at the specific types of potential uses that are allowed, um, and other studies for what that does with groundwater.
Just actually to clarify, to mildly uh on to Commissioner Passenger on this, in terms of transportation, if we go through those point by point, they don't meet, they might meet, they meet one of those. They meet direct access to arterial collector uh collector routes. But uh, the number three is an open question that is that is currently under review and number one is a straight-up no. So.
Stipulate bullet two.
Yeah, they they meet bullet two.
And then last criteria for our our eyes, existing land uses. Um, this one has a lot of those like open question type requirements about what would actually be built on the site, but it generally requires that um, uses in RRI are visually and functionally compatible with rural character, and so that visually and functionally is pretty important to this, so that's both aesthetic impacts and functional impacts to the rural setting. Uh, the uses must be dependent on the rural setting and resources, and so that goes back to the issue of other types of industrial uses that aren't necessarily rural resource dependent, wouldn't be here. This would be things that relates very specifically to um rural resources. Um, and that the industrial site would not interfere with those rural uses or resources. So that is mainly things like not interfering with things like active agricultural lands to transfer them into being industrial, stuff like that. Uh, the uses must not affect the visual character of the rural landscape and the site design. Again, that's a future, like more specific issue, uh should reinforce the boundaries of the site itself and the rural nature of the industrial area.
Not gonna say anything prettier than a mine, but mostly. Brings to mind if if a tree falls and nobody's there to see it, cause I, is there anywhere that people could actually see this site from places that the public could be?
I think the most immediate visual line to the site is probably from some of those neighborhoods off of eighty-eight. But there is a lot of um just undeveloped like tr- land with trees on it around the site, so. It does have kind, and with actually the Black River Corridor there, it does have that natural visual buffer, at least on that side.
Anyway.
Like Commissioner Kaiser said, there's no public access.
Yeah.
On all that stuff.
Uh, so for the existing zone, um, the locational criteria for this one, uh, for the land capability, environmental characteristics, the current zone is intended for lands that are within the Black River Corridor or along the Niskali Bluff, which this one is not, or otherwise severely constrained by environmentally sensitive or hazardous areas. Um, which the site, I would not say is severely constrained, but it does definitely have those sensitive areas present. Um, for natural resources, uh, the area might contain mineral uh forest mineral deposits, critical areas, soil suitable for agriculture. Um, so again, this kind of falls under that mineral deposits and critical areas, probably some of the why it got the zone that it got. Um, for public services, the uses should not require provision of urban services, utilities. Uh, they might be arti- located along arterials, um, you know, close to existing centers of employment, um, which this is, actually, it's it's not too far outside of a UGA. Um, and for existing land uses, the land should be comprised of parcels twenty acres or larger in size, which this site is. Uh, all of them are larger than twenty acres. Uh, residences, agriculture, forestry, mineral extraction, open space or undeveloped man land may be present. So again, this is kind of how it got the zone it currently has. It it, the site generally meets most of these criteria. Okay, are there any questions before we talk about movie time? Cool, okay. So we wanted to bring two options to you guys. I feel like based on the questions, I kind of know what the answer is, but uh, we can either move to set a hearing date now, um, or wait to set that date and instead uh schedule a second study session for the eighteenth. So uh, we can either talk about this again June eighteenth or have a hearing on it on for July seventeenth. And we could still do the July sixteenth date, even if we do that second study session.
How are we feeling about a second study session?
I think we needed, I had a lot of questions and a lot of requests.
I do want to hear from the public too.
Okay. Yeah, we'll work to get, um, a second study session on then. And yeah, I will make sure we come back with some of the information that's been requested in this conversation.
Yes.
Just got a question. Um, I'm the type of guy, like when we did the Grand Mound study, we did all that. I like to go down and put eyes on, you know, take pictures, walk around, take a look at what's actually down there compared to what we see on a map. So is there some way to access this site?
Uh, eighty-eighth is a public road.
Yeah, I know it's a public road, but I'm sure there's a gate at the end that says no trespassing. Okay. Uh, so my question is, since Mr. Parsons is present, is there a phone number we contact to let him know that we're coming and that we can gain access if they can walk around the site?
My email is somewhere in the file.
Yes, uh, your, the contact information is, um, should be in what you received. Uh, as far as the comment today, and then also in the actual, uh, application materials. There's a point of contact for the application on that, and that should have an email, a phone number and everything.
Are you organizing a four commissioner or less field trip?
I, I mean, I could, but I, I've done this with every time, one of these types of things that we've done. And this is the only site that I've not been able to access without driving around the thing. So I wanted to make sure that, you know, there was a method of contacting someone and being able to go take a look.
I would invite everybody out. So you got my contact.
If you, if you are heading out there, I would love to accompany you on that.
Okay. So let me, uh, let me get his email contact. I'll look at a couple of dates. I'll send it back to Claire, because we got to go through the board to communicate with the board and let you know what those dates are and everybody could let me know.
Thanks Barry, it sounds good.
And we're going to want to be, uh, be careful if we do have enough votes.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be a public notification. I understand. That's why I wanted to send it back to Claire.
Yeah, appreciate that. No quorum.
At this point, five or less is no quorum.
That's fifty percent.
It's the majority of the appointed. We have ten appointed.
So it takes six for a quorum.
Yep.
Official gaggle.
Says, says the parliamentarian.
Noticed.
Whoa.
Yeah.
Self, self-appointed.
Well, if there's no more.
None of us have any idea if you're just making that up.
That's why it works. Don't see anybody with the fourteenth edition of the Roberts Rules of Order.
Okay, thank you, Claire.
Yeah, thank you all.
That brings us to, unmarkedly, under here. Uh, we are on item eight. Work session number thirty-five for Thurston twenty forty-five. All our recommendations, I believe we're going to be on the, um, continuing to review the climate crosswalk. And, uh, point of personal, uh, whatever, can I use the restroom and you all get started without me?
Definitely.
Very much.
We could probably just do a five minute break for everyone.
That'd be great.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Um, okay.
Does the chair.
Have a laugh. Five minute break for everyone.
Unprecedented. That stop the recording and mute the room?
I don't believe we have muted the room or stopped the recording.
Yeah, I mean, just for my information, uh, Commissioner Kaiser, would you like to go on that, uh, field trip?
Yeah, Barry, I would.
I would if the timing's good.
Yeah.
I would if it doesn't push you over quorum. Otherwise, I'll arrange my own.
Okay, Scott? No, okay. Colin, I understand you would. Okay. With me, that's five right there, and I think Ivan wanted to go too, so.
I could not go, it's okay.
No, no, that's okay. All I have to do is, is notify him of the date and then they can put out public notice.
Good Commissioner Casino here, I can be, I can do it separately also.
Okay, well, let me, as long as we give two weeks notice, we can, we can all go together.
He's gonna, he's promised to take me on a boat ride on their water.
Yeah, but if we do it public, we have to invite the public. I don't know if he'd be okay with that.
It'd be better to split us up into three groups.
Yeah, you're right.
There might be some folks, he might not want to.
Yeah, okay. Okay, let me find out what would be a good date and, um, I'll put out an email to Claire and let her send it out. See what we can do.
Are these?
Joel, did you want to look at going on that field trip?
Pretty agreeable or are we concerned for convention?
So we're probably going to have to do, do separate.
You've seen those as a basis to move forward in discussions, it's perfectly fine.
I have the right version of the crosswalk here. I think three different copies of it, like this one is the one that we're working on. Hopefully, right. And that's environmental, you know, we have environmental impacts.
Yeah.
Around forty, forty. Around forty and as a, uh, just like as we're going through these, um,
It's not black and white, but there.
There are a few of these that look like they can be bundled, forty-two, forty-three and forty-four.
Takes a lot.
Okay.
The argument that takes.
That when we get to that point.
To be able to, you know, build the coalers. Is true.
And the power.
And the batteries, that's true, and those resources, but actually using them and produce, producing very little greenhouse, for the now greenhouse gas emissions.
They're all, they're all addressing CL two.
Is a big, is a significant decrease in greenhouse gas emissions. So, um, it's not nothing, it's true, but it's much better.
You think it's going to be ninety ten?
For the long term, yeah. For the short term, not as much because we said it takes positive kills, but then for, for the long term, yeah.
You know, you do look very familiar.
Yeah.
Um, Eric, is my husband in? He talks.
Oh, probably not. I don't know the name of Eric Miller. Did he, uh, did he run for office?
He did.
In Tainan?
In Tainan and also he ran for state.
Oh, okay. Okay, got it. Excited about that.
By the way, I think you read an article, I read the one I read, Joel, that, uh, he said that the economy was trapped.
The one that like really pushed.
Are we all back? I think we are. Okay. I think that's five minutes or. There, so we're gonna get, thank you Amelia for spending another lovely Wednesday evening with us on the climate crosswalk. And we're gonna get back to it, uh, I believe we are starting, correct me if, if I'm wrong, but on page ten of the current version I have.
Yes, um, number forty, T three point seven. So the TCMP action description is reevaluate regulations and make necessary changes to ensure charging stations are able to be permitted in locations where they are needed. That's from the TCMP. Um, also Yvonne, welcome. Hi, nice to meet you in person. If I say an acronym, but you're like, what is that? Stop me and I'll explain.
Will do.
And, oh, Commissioner Passinger. I have not read every one of these in detail, but most of them I've looked through. I've talked to a few other commissioners. I think there's pretty broad support. Is, can anyone share if there's anything in all of this that we have heartburn over or upset with or not happy with? I'd rather not go through fifty items one by one if we're all ninety-eight percent in agreement.
Need to find all of this, um, this list.
Oh, that was.
TCAT's list.
TCAT's list, okay.
Um, there's a, there's a couple of things that may require kind of the wordsmithing. We talked about to being a twenty-year plan. I'm not sure if we want to call out electric vehicles or maybe zero emission vehicles, that kind of thing. Just because technology changes and we can't predict what will happen. I would agree with that. Um, let's see, what were some of the others that I saw in here?
I haven't had a chance to go through it at all.
Um, oh, uh, an aspect for me was just, uh, when we're talking about, like, in the forty-two, forty-three, forty-four section, when we're talking about electric vehicle, like increasing consumer awareness around electric vehicles and stuff like that. I just like public transit and like alternate, like other non-ve, non-automated transit to be included in that. That's, that's my only big thing.
Okay. But,
that's not a.
I mean, I personally, I think that we can go through a lot of these quickly, but we probably should go through them all. Uh, but I just remember the last time the delta in terms of matching up with what we agreed with was farther apart. And now it looks pretty close to spot on. So that's all I'm acknowledging. We should be able to move pretty quickly.
Okay.
Maybe the abbreviated description would be good.
Yeah, you don't have to read it word for word. Uh, yeah, yeah, so we can, we can all.
I haven't, this is a good time. Oh, all right. So this one, our related was IPCL nineteen, which we did add some edits to a few pages back. I can't just print off a new one each time. I have to make sure I have on my notes, so apologies as I flip through. So the edits we made to IPCL nineteen included changing commercial dwellings to buildings. Um, and then adding a bullet. Yeah. To create a simple and consistent residential charging station permitting process to reduce costs and time to development. Um, yeah, so the, the staff notes was that the code update package, uh, currently addresses this. You got, did submit notes. I'll let you guys read through those. I'll save my voice.
There you go.
I, I think the only, the closest that I have to a, a significant suggestion here is just cutting assess opportunities to build upon or assess opportunities to, in the excessive opportunities to build upon. We can just go with build upon.
Sure.
Temperature check on changing it to build upon?
Be opposed.
Yeah, any opposed.
Okay. Right. So then, uh, T three ten, uh, the TCMP action description. Investigate options and set appropriate timetables and policies for municipal and other governmental entities to replace public fleets with cleaner, energy efficient vehicles to reduce long-term costs, fuel costs, improve air quality and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So we did have a couple in the climate chapter, policies about replacing commercial fleets with electric vehicles. Um, and then replacing county fleet vehicles with electric models. And that did have that as practical language. This, it's not always an automatic switch, but.
They don't have the charging stations, number one.
Yeah, it looks like the TCAT's recommendations here are around, uh, like, uh, I guess a slight, if I'm understanding this correctly, it's basically just a, uh, slight refocus in terms of like making the standard be, um, electric vehicles, or I guess we were talking about zero verifications vehicles.
And so when you're referencing TCAT.
I'm sorry, I was just looking at their new comments.
So, yeah, I just want to make that clear. Uh, what I am using for the crosswalk is what was submitted in the public timeline that everyone had. What you are referencing, they sent today outside of that public timeline.
Yes, thank you.
Comments?
Agreed. Whatever he says.
We're, we're comfortable with the existing, uh, language or we, we're, is anyone opposed to, to asking staff to incorporate a suggestion from TCAT on this item? Nobody's opposed.
Well, you know, I think from the addition of IPCL seventy-seven, I think timetables, policies and budgets is not land use. I think that's more of a, for commissioners to do on some other level rather than in the comp plan.
Can we replace it with policies? Just inappropriate policies for the county too?
Yeah, I'd be okay with that.
What do you feel about that?
Okay, so the suggestion is to add that original TCAT note for a new IP item set appropriate with edit policies for the county to replace public fleets with cleaner, energy efficient vehicles, and it's all written in public comment. Oh, the one I'm looking at doesn't say zero emission.
Right, there's this thing saying electric and they would like to change that to zero emission.
I think this one says cleaner, energy efficient vehicles. It doesn't say electric.
That's, that's maybe even better.
Not really, because it's cleaner, like, that's like one step forward, that's not.
Mm-hmm. I think it is recognizing the fact that sometimes you might not be able to go all the way to the cleanest.
Yeah, you may not be able to get zero emissions with some vehicle types right now with current technology.
Which is where those appropriate policies come into play.
Yeah, we can't get a heavy duty van, it's electric right now, but we might be able to get the least emitting version of that.
Significantly cleaner.
My vote?
I think.
As you read.
Is anybody who's got hurt bird on the language, um, as it would read now, taking out the words timetables and budgets to set policies for cleaner, energy efficient vehicles.
Policy's better language.
I'm not seeing.
I'll just change it to policies and we'll add that. All right. Okay, so the three point one one, this partner with environmental and other agencies to increase consumer awareness about EV options and incentives for use and purchase. Um, and we've.
Sorry, can we just go back? Commissioner Halston has raised a good point about the last one, just to say that simply going to cleaner is one element of improving things for the environment. But if you were to get cleaner but replace vehicles every one or three years, that's actually terrible for the environment. Using them for as long of a time period as practicable is actually much better for the environment. So can we have some clause in there about fully utilizing the available life as practical?
It does say replace vehicles as quickly as possible. How about we could change it to replace vehicles at end of life?
I, I just want to use the best vehicles for as long as possible.
Actually, the BOD standard is that you have to replace vehicles when it's no more, when it's not economical not to replace a vehicle. Uh, when a vehicle gets to a certain age, the maintenance requirements on a vehicle gets so large that it's more economical and cost effective to replace the vehicle than to allow the current one to continue to run by performing more maintenance on it.
The sheriff's office, it's like three months.
Yeah, well, that's because they recommend, I'm sorry, didn't say that.
Uh, maybe explore some language to figure out how to, how to best address that. It, what was the standard that you?
Well, the sta, the standard, the standard is maintenance and, um.
But is, is there a?
So I've learned all sorts of things about how the county operates its fleet maintenance recently. Um, and, uh, we do collect, so each, each asset has an end of life. Those are probably using those exact same criteria that Barry mentioned. Um, I think the language as written would create policies for like what to prioritize when you're choosing the next vehicle.
And so then maybe we just replace that, replace as quickly as possible, because that obviously destroys the.
That's not what you want to do.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so are we good with removing that last sentence? And then that, yeah, set appropriate policies should still.
Yeah, because most, most government entities have that kind of a formula. Or criteria established with their maintenance programs, so.
Can I hear what, what we have now for this? Because I've, I've, we've swapped around a few things. I'm, I've lost it.
Do you want to read it Amelia? You want me to try?
I can do it. So uh, the new I P item would be set appropriate policies for the county. The word the is missing, so I'd be adding that. Um radical change, I know. Set appropriate policies for the county to replace public fleets with cleaner, energy efficient vehicles. To reduce long term fuel costs, improve air quality and reduce greenhouse gas emissions.
Thank you.
Okay, alright.
Oh, just best, um best reduce, um best covers uh both. Uh, so uh to best reduce long term fuel costs. That gets us uh efficiency versus uh. These other, these other issues of like, yeah, like we're, we're replacing them at a reasonable timetable for, for. This priority, it just, it, it changes what the priority is.
We've got vehicles that get fifty miles to the gallon, using those for a long time is still a good idea. We got vehicles that get two miles to the gallon. Let's get them replaced as soon as possible.
Okay, we comfortable with adding the word best?
Where is best going?
Uh, after vehicles two and before reduce long term fuel costs.
Now we're good, we're good, okay. So T three eleven, uh we basically have that exact language. Um, T C A T, um before the original public comment deadline, I did ask to. Um, or did recommend to add an I P action to provide grants. To separate agencies to increase consumer awareness about.
I probably agree with that as well. Um, but at the very least, if we're going to encourage this kind of. Educational slash awareness of stuff. It seems to me, the phrase that keeps haunting me is. We're not going to solar panel and electric car way out of this environmental crisis. And the real thing we need to do is reduce usage, reduce waste, reduce. Not be buying shit like crazy and buying giant storage units to, because we don't even have enough room in our house for. We need to reduce. And I would like that included in any kind of public campaign about. Ways people, public can better improve the environment.
Yeah, I, I completely agree with that. Um, as I'd said before, my, my main thing with this was in. Uh, in this section, just to include uh like transit as a, as a re, as part of that. Um, transfer alternative uh. Transportation. I know that like providing grants isn't really something that's within our purview, so I understand why that is.
Those that relates to transportation, which is this, the next couple of items. I think the, the reducing use is a vehicle miles traveled kind of thing.
Not exclusively, but it definitely matters.
So.
I wonder if something that would work is so that language partner with environmental organizations and other agencies to increase consumer awareness. About, uh. Oh, I just lost the word about tri- like vehicle emissions.
And all best practices for reducing usage, reducing waste, uh reducing vehicle miles traveled, etc.
We could do a separate item that's like literally just uh educating. Or like improving consumer awareness about the impacts of consumerism on the environment. Because I think that's crucial enough to be its own.
Do we want to make one overarching statement or do we want to have that repeated in different places? We just want to make.
Yeah, I mean, does this have to be exclusive to like, you're saying all transportation. I'm saying all everything.
That's what item.
This is replacing with electric vehicles. Our next section is increasing public traffic.
So we're just, we're dealing with electric vehicles at the moment or cleaner.
So we're good with the language we have.
I, I mean, I do like your idea of that separate item, which does get to what uh. I'm sure passenger was saying about wanting to have something, um and maybe this is a bridge between these two, these two sections that we're talking about. But have something that's about um sustainable consumption, means of education.
We do have, um. We have some stuff on building codes. And I wonder. The, we've got some stuff on the Waste Less Food Program, composting outreach, reducing organic waste. Education campaigns and energy and building codes. I'm wondering if there might be a good place for us to, to fit it in before we just.
Yeah, and if there is, I'm. Yeah, yeah, I try, yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah, let's, let's get back to the E V.
You have a whole section on reduced consumption of carbon intensive goods and services.
There we go.
Well, do we just want to take that language and um do, let me see, which number is that? It's W, right?
W six, it's number fifteen nine.
So, do we want to do language that is something similar? To like develop targeted community outreach to reduce consumption of carbon intensive goods and services?
That's great.
Alright. So new item, develop targeted community outreach. Uh, to reduce consumption. Of carbon intensive goods and services, new I P action.
So Commissioner Casino, when we got to this one, you had something to say, and I think I. About when we provide grants. Environmental and other agencies.
Trying to fit grant funding into the comp plan. That's not where we do that. Grants or anything like that, but comp plan is not where you do that. I will also say is it does assume that that's, that funding is the right barrier and there's like a, there's a whole range of. Different kind of ways to influence the adoption of new ideas. Dollars is some of it, not always.
Oh, go ahead, Chris Martin.
I'm, I'm just gonna get the staff suggestion on this one. Um, it's on forty three, which is collaborate with environmental organizations to support sustainable purchase program to subsidize or incentivize. Fuel efficient or renewable energy replacements for consumer vehicle, vehicles and home upgrades. To reduce energy cost burdens and advance uh consumer decarbonization with Thursday County. I think that goes farther than what we're discussing here. Uh, uh, or what, what, a lot of the other ones do, and I like it. Um, I get that like us creating a car, like a car share purchase program, like that's a handy. A handy aspect of that, but that would be, that would be some, that would be within that, like these, these suggestions that I'm seeing on the side. Um, it'd be a good example, but that would just be what that is.
I was thinking along the same lines, wanted to ask uh today about. You know, you just mentioned supporting, there's multiple ways to support. The groups getting funding for these projects and they even mentioned here, it's not just giving support, but. Saying that you're supporting funding proposal, proposals which often, often helps them get grants. Or matching funds which often helps them get grants. Um, so is that what, what the, this. Staff recommendation already says, what, what you think is ideal language for that or do we need an statement that kind of matches this with that?
Yeah, that match, that forty two through forty four.
Provide, this is from the person, and it's saying help provide financial support for these efforts by. Seeking grant funding, supporting other organizations, funding proposals and providing match or other funding to assist these efforts.
That's a good list.
Yeah, I think, I think if we use the staff suggestion, then we use theirs as examples, that's fine.
Okay, how do we feel about that?
Okay, so we want to add the staff language on forty three. And we want that as an I P action or a climate policy. It kind of seems like a long ranging thing, so I would lean towards policy because it's a bit higher level.
This required dedicated public program.
And were you saying to add something to this, this new?
This last sentence from. Fourth paragraph in the person climate action team stuff.
From the June fourth comments? Okay, so on the comment for.
And starts with help provide.
Such it, basically such as. You could such as the staff suggestion.
Help provide, okay. Alright, okay. Alright, so I'll make a note, got notes on.
Yeah, and to your point, that, those kinds of things can and should be the kind of thing that you're doing. Like a letter of support can be a big deal for an organization. And it doesn't cost the county really anything.
Alright, okay, so that forty four is another similar one.
I think.
Are we good?
We covered it.
Okay, there seems to be a majority of head nodding, okay. Then that next section was just some additional related actions that you could tell me that I've done a good job. Um, just kidding. But yeah, those are just some additional related things that are part of what we're doing that's worked on the T C M P.
Transition to public transit.
Yeah, so forty five, T four point one is increase local public transit routes, frequency, what they focus on, ensuring the greatest number of riders. Have access to a low carbon transportation option. Any expansion of service should include an analysis of climate impacts to ensure the program does not result in an. Increase in greenhouse emissions. So that is the T C M P action description. I have a list of related policies. Um, that are in the current drafts. T C A T did have a note about, they say any expansion of service should include an analysis of climate impacts. To ensure the program does not result in an increase in greenhouse gas emissions. I do have a staff note on that. An increase in public transit often leads to a decrease in individual consumer miles traveled. So I wanted to make sure that was part of the conversation, that public transit does reduce miles traveled.
Carbon intensive public transit.
So I felt like that T C A T comment might be confusing for the conversation.
Assuming there's riders on the bus.
And that inner city transit, I don't think is wanting to run a bus alone.
It's not that, it's the, the trip from Olympia out to the Walmart in Yelm. Okay.
I mean, a certain number, like level of ridership.
I mean, that, that bus is, it's got two people on it in one direction. You're lucky.
You know, to some of these other, these other flexible car shares or programs or, or things like that.
Decisions will be made in inner city transit about what is efficient for their system. So I, you know, the staff insight and crew is collaborate with inner city transit. That's really the, the crux of it here.
And that we've got that I P C L fifty three partner with local transit agencies. So. Are we?
I like what we have overall. I think we could, the, we could uh. Maybe uh when it comes to C L eight, if we added where it says like. That you're auditing for transit accessibility gaps among uh overburdened and vulnerable populations, we can. Also be auditing for climate impacts. That sounds like something that we, that fits within those goals.
Feels like the kind of thing you would want to keep data on. I could see you making a choice to run a bus line at a climate deficit. For equities.
Exactly. I think there are two things that need to be balanced, but they both need to be stated to be balanced.
There would be added which item?
Uh, so that's uh I P C L eight and it would be uh. Uh, identify and address public transit accessibility among overburdened and climate populations. And climate impacts to ensure the program. And, and climate impact.
And climate impacts, basically.
So how about audit multimodal transportation systems and policies to identify and address climate impacts? And public transit.
I like that better.
I see that.
Okay. So this is uh about first and last mile, low carbon solutions, connecting neighborhoods, connecting routes. Encouraging H O A's to join in. Um. Also talking about an expansion of service should include an analysis of climate impacts, which now we have in C L eight.
You know, since climate impacts already in there now. So I think we got it. Does that change? Address this in your mind?
I think it, it does significantly affect it. Yeah, I think when we're talking about uh.
To me, the first and last mile, low carbon solutions is again, is going to be a public transit agency building out. Their network um based on their criteria. And.
And we've already said.
The county's not gonna do that.
And there also is uh T three F two is creating links for, for walking, biking. And those are often that really good first and last mile.
Trans are outs, okay.
It does notably exclude roller bleeding, but.
That'll be for the next update.
So we feel good on moving to forty seven?
Yep, I'm feeling good.
Uh, this one, they already liked it. It's maintain a fearless system for public transit. Already have that. Cool, okay, forty eight. Maintain and expand a regional online page that lists all the mode shift, education efforts and employer benefits opportunities. Just Thurston here to there, include a comment section for suggestions to further transit education and ridership. One of our policies is already make information available to everyone, allow people to participate. Um, but then this is really uh inner city transit and T R P C oriented. So we don't have much more on this because we don't control it.
I guess one thing I was curious about here is they mentioned Thurston here to there um a few times in here. Um, it's not something I'm terribly familiar with, but it seems like it's referencing, it's one of those circumstances of referencing someone else doing work that we then don't have to do. To maintain uh something that is a climate goal. Um, but yeah, I don't, I don't know Thurston here to there, so if anyone does, I'd. Is there, could, would we be able to ask the uh folks here about that?
There's the other comment on Thurston here to there.
Uh, it's an app you can get on your phone.
Okay.
Tells you how you, how you can get. And I think, I think I T puts it out, I'm not sure, or they have a version.
Okay, so if we have an item that's just coordinate with inner city transit on um. Multimodal uh transportation.
I think we could probably say coordinate and advocate for.
Well, we also do say support a wide range of public transport programs. We already have that.
Okay.
So it sounds like it's something that's, uh, as long as we're, we're, we're dealing with the education and the, the connection component, it sounds like something that we're, we're building in there.
Okay.
Alright, so forty nine, T four one five. This is work with employers and transit agencies to develop wasted. This is work with employers and transit agencies to develop ways and incentivize employee ra- ridership. We do have T three C two, which we did edit slightly already. That, let me pull up the language so I have it for folks listening. Um, we have support and expand programs that encourage other ways to you, to commute to work instead of driving alone. These include public or private and public sector services, they should also promote teleworking, which will now be remote working. Um, flex time and compressed work weeks, this will change commuting patterns.
The comment from TCAT is just add work with employers and transit agencies to encourage employees.
I think incentivizes is their, their word rather than encourage, but. I don't find either, like, it it's, it's, uh, it it, it's not a as far as I'm, I'm concerned, like, I think incentivize, they're, they're specifically opening that up to modes that aren't just like, you should do it, feel good about yourself. Opening for, for grants for actual, like, uh.
Maybe Commissioner Dave, or I'm sorry, Manager Dave would remember if, if there's a possible, incentivizing is very difficult. If we were able to incentivize a, um, business by telling them, we will give you the ability to have less parking if you offer flex time or ride sharing and those kinds, is, is there a way to implement a program along those lines? Where you tie it to a reduction in their pa- parking requirements?
Be cool. I like that.
That sounds possible.
Sounds innovative to me, it does.
So that sounds like it could be, if we're talking about this, uh, T three C two. Um, if we do have something like incentivize instead of encourage, but we otherwise keep the language that we've already mo- heavily modified. We can, we can put a couple examples in there and that's a really great one.
And there are a for example section in the bottom of IPCL eighty three, we could pull out and include this reduction in parking.
So we want to say, do we want to change that where it says support and expand programs that encourage to say support and expand programs that incentivize?
Or encourage and incentivize.
Okay, so maybe encourage is just fine. Um, so keep that and, but then add examples.
From the bottom of the last.
From TCAT's, um, public.
Well, I guess most of them are already in there.
Yeah, we do say, well, it will say remote working, flex time, compressed work weeks.
I, I like the example of reduction in parking requirements.
We could then pull that out and make it a little bullet list, but I'm fine either way, just whatever makes it clear to read for folks or clear to write for you guys.
And I think there are two different types of incentives, there are incentives to an organization to implement these types of policies. And then there are policies that incentivize employees.
I wonder if, yeah, if there could maybe be a separate one that says like develop, development incentives. Oh, gosh, it's really hard doing this on the fly, um.
I think we can take this direction and wordsmith it and post.
If you understand, you know what we're getting at.
Neily and I will solve this.
Pick it off the line, thank you.
You think it's speedy, but I still have to take notes, alright, and hopefully I'll understand what that means later. Okay.
Watch the video.
Yeah, exactly, when they posted forty's, yeah, um, so TF or T five point one. Uh, this is coordinate bicycle and pedestrian plans of the cities and county, large regional plan. Um, coordinate efforts, so we do have a few that are related to making a re- regional pedestrian network. Um, connected trails, uh, working with the regional trails plan, non-motorized system, bike network. And then TRPC does do this. TRPC is the, the regional collaborator.
I think they're the, the implementer.
Yeah, and I think that is even referenced in here.
Yeah.
The, the TCAT's and the TCAT suggestion basically reinforces that.
Are we good with that?
Yeah.
Um, my only thing as a biking guy, um, is, uh, when we're talking about connected, like, I like the, the safe, convenient and continuous, uh, connected trails, that's all great, something about protected uh, bike, bike routes would be nice.
Like the e-bikes wasn't by you?
I, I'm, I'm fine with the e-bikes wasn't by me, uh, it's when, when the trucks decide to try to like suck me in next to them, that's a.
You'll probably survive an e-bike collision. So, well, I mean, it does say, uh, create a safe and develop a safe, so I think that would be including.
You'd think so. I agree with you.
I agree with Oxford.
About safety on roadways, which I think he's talking about bike lanes on roadways.
Yeah, that's, that's where, I'm sorry, that's where they're referencing on the separated and protected opportunities.
I, I'm a regular user, I live right by both of the major trail systems. And right by the crossroads and usage of those has changed a lot over the last eight years, uh. It used to be almost exclusively, uh, walkers and bikers and joggers. Uh, there's been a lot of changes and when I've talked to elected officials about what's going on with those trails. The first thing they tell me, especially for the county. I think this is also true for the municipalities, is there's absolutely no funding for enforcement of anything on those trails. For any protective measures, for, all they have funding for is maintenance. And so I don't know whether, if we want people to be able to use them, they have to be safe and accessible. And I think they've in some ways become less safe and less accessible over the last five years. Both due to e-bikes whizzing by at ninety miles an hour. Only slightly exaggerated and, um, a lot of other strange things happening on the trails. So I don't know if we can do anything to encourage. It's nice, we spent all this money to build it, but like, can we spend a little money enforcing anything that would make them safer?
So that sounds like a pursue grant or like pursue funding, uh, opportunity there. Cause that, that takes it out of like, we're cutting one of our budgets for that or trying to pull more money from, uh, taxpayers. But I'm sure, that sounds like the kind of enforcement thing that there, there's probably additional funding for in this state.
I just bring up down in California, they've actually, uh, prohibited, uh, e-bikes on pedestrian bike trails. Because of the problems that they've had, and some communities have prohibited within the communities.
And I'm not encouraging that, cause I think e-bikes play an important role, but it, there has to be a limit.
There is.
Speed limit.
I mean, there is a speed limit, but you know how high it is?
No.
It's around forty, thirty nine, I believe, thirty five, it's somewhere in that range. Very high. And I've seen.
Sorry, we're getting all sidetracked.
So, it's in the number fifty.
Yeah, and so, um, I can wordsmith a, uh, new uh, policy that says pursue trail and path safety funding, I can make it a little bulkier and smoother.
To encourage usage.
Yeah.
I like that.
Okay.
Okay.
So fifty one, it's talking about the TCMP action was regional inventory to identify gaps. We have several things related to this where it's developing continuous regional bike network, continuous regional pedestrian network. Um, creating links, um, identifying pedestrian paths and promoting walkability. Audits of existing transportations to address accessibility gap. Um, so we do have some stuff on this and, uh, the TCAT was to add their stuff for beta.
Would have an issue with that?
Keeping our languages.
The only thing I'm seeing that's different is they're talking about an inventory, which is basically just taking everything that you have just described that we're doing and making it accessible.
And that is what TRPC, TRPC does in their regional plan.
Then collaborate on my government.
Continue to collaborate with regional network planning.
Yeah, with your PC.
Or, yeah. Collaborate on an inventory and then we can, that's, that's a handy, yeah, yeah, you have collaborate on a regional inventory as a possible, possible additional policy. And that's great.
I think that works.
I like this phrase in the June fourth document that says, make development and expansion of this network a high priority.
That gets us away from that, like, it has to be done at the end of this year, but it still pushes it ahead and recognizes the urgency of the situation.
I don't feel okay with including that language. Can anybody?
Okay, so the, um, staff language plus that last sentence from the June fourth comment from Thurston Climate Action in for action five point one. Alright, try to make sure it's very clear for the. Alright, so new policy.
Fine with fifty three?
Two, or are we skipping fifty three? Or fif- no, fifty two is a similar one, maintain and expand a walking bicycling incentive program with safety education for families. We do have provide safe, convenient bike routes to all regional schools, encourage their use, we have the safe, convenient and continuous bike network. And support education programs for motor sit- motorists and bicyclists. Wonder if we should just say cyclists.
Yeah, cyclists works.
Okay. Nobody seemed angry at that, so, okay, um, they should increase their understanding of bicycle, cycling laws and encourage safe lawful road sharing. But that doesn't necessarily get to families.
Yeah, and their safety education is less like, it's like, this is, this is about like, we should make sure that they're obeying the law. Not, or like, you know, that they're, they're being safe, safe lawful road shared, which is a little bit different from safety education. The thing that I was talking about at the beginning.
Rebecca Harvey did suggest during some modifications to partner with intercity transit and other community partners to promote a walking, biking education and incentive program.
Yeah, yeah, walking rides, great for that.
Walk and roll, especially for our folks in wheelchairs, yeah.
Anyone have issues with Rebecca Harvey's suggestion?
That seemed like unanimous head nodding, alright.
I mean, we can move through fifty three, looks good, both the next two pages are done.
Oh man, we can get to fifty five and then like we've done half more than it's time.
Fifty four.
So this one, um, the language from the TCMP is conduct efficiency improvements to municipal water and sewage treatment systems. Prioritize components that consume the most energy and have high greenhouse gas emissions. So we do have utilities, um, periodically review municipal water for opportunities for inefficiency improvements. Prioritize components that consume, we could just add water and sewer.
Yep, great.
Okay.
Knowing that lot is the largest energy user in the county, great.
Alright, so fifty five.
Oh, just wonder, when do we wanna put this off?
There are natural stopping.
I'm just.
Probably seventy six is a natural stopping point.
Yeah.
Fifty five, can we stop at fifty nine?
Yeah.
I think I'm, sorry.
Alright. So conduct water audits. Conduct water audits of city and county facilities to determine prioritization of capital improvements.
Don't see any comments noted, so.
So we've got that. Fifty six. This is, they focus on researching and implementing nitrous oxide mitigation strategies. We already do have water, like expand water quantity and quality monitoring programs.
It's about air emissions.
This is about emissions from the, from the treatment plant itself.
Which I assume come from the oxygen plant.
I I would imagine that lot the county can encourage, you know, there's a board at lot that includes one county commissioner and three other members. Um, but this is really a lot thing for our major treatment plant here, I guess the county owns a couple of treatment plants, but I, I doubt they have any. They're, they're so small, any emissions would be nominal.
Yeah, I mean, there's, their recommendation here is specifically support lot in. So it's acknowledging that lots can be the primary driver and that we just facilitate them as best we can.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The county has three.
But they're tiny.
There are.
So we're good, which is adding in a new IP item?
Yeah, yeah.
And there was a revised recommendation. Um, let's see, I'm trying to see how different it is. I don't quite see a difference here, but I can, I can go through that too. So, okay, so that's fifty seven, this is provide waste audits for business owners and educational practices that decrease waste. And we've got quite a few for these, um, but it's not necessarily a waste audit. Um, I'm not sure how we would staff a new waste audit program for business owners, um, but we do have some stuff on developing outreach for recycling composting material. Composting outreach and education, um, composting outreach and education specifically to businesses. Um, supporting local businesses and partnering with the Washington Recycling Developments, uh, Center. So we have a few things related to this, it's just.
Environmental health is the one that's normal. You monitor those programs.
Language that says, you know, county providing waste audits, what does that sound like from a resource standpoint for you?
Not my department. It wouldn't be us, it probably would be someone like environmental health, um, so I know that, that the state has programs that are intended to do this. Um, I'm trying to rack my brain now, um, there are some grant programs, so it could be a, uh, like a pursue funding to provide, I'd probably say support, cause I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna speak for environmental, they audit sort of right. Right mechanism.
Pursue funding to provide support for business owners and ed- and support and education for business owners on practices that decrease waste.
Audits might be a really good tool, I don't know if.
Including audits.
Include audits.
Like, for example.
Yeah.
For example.
She said pursue funding, um, it, but you also said that there's state partnerships that may, may be available, so maybe pursue partnerships and funding?
It would be grant funding.
Yeah.
From the state. They have some grant programs to do work like this, there some nexus with the Climate Commitment Act, there's some dollars that I think that come through the.
I just wasn't sure if there was an agency that might already be doing some of this that we could, we could link people into.
Okay, so what I have in my notes is I was thinking we would add this to CL three three, which is provide composting outreach and education to businesses, pursue funding or partnerships for business owners and education. For business owners, uh, education on practices that decrease waste such as waste audits. So I can make that a little nicer sounding, but does that get to the general?
Yeah, maybe an and or instead of an or, but yeah.
Yes, Commissioner Bessinger. I don't wanna drag this meeting on any longer, but I really, maybe for the next meeting, I have some serious questions about how we do recycling. Um, I have family members that live in every jurisdiction, including the county. And everything is different and they're constantly changing and I've heard stories, I mean, if you even just look at your bill that you get from LeMay, it's confusing and tells you weird things like you pay extra for recycling, but you have no choice in it. It's confusing and tells you weird things like you pay extra for recycling, but you have no choice in it. And we used to hear stories that everything that went in recycling bins was a total waste because it all ended up in the dump anyways. Uh, we used to hear that it used to go to China, uh, but they stopped buying it about five years ago. I would really think there could be some. Coordination and educational efforts around our county about how to really best recycle.
Yes.
I wanna put a plug in, so you may know about the Master Gardener Program. There's also the Master Recycler Composter Program. It is also run through a combination of public works and some of the folks at the Fairgrounds. Uh, who do the master garden program. I went through it. It was awesome. I didn't do all my full training, so I'm not a master recycler composter, but, um. They take you on tours through the LeMay facilities. Um, they actually show you how our machinery is working, because, yeah, I had those same questions. I was like, I. I've constantly been told that recycling, you have to do it, but also it's useless. And so I applied, I did the program. And there's also a bunch of information on our solid waste pages and wonderful staff who will happily take you on a tour.
I recently at a conference got a presentation about the waste to energy. Uh, program in Spokane, which seems really interesting. They turned the waste into electricity. They burn it and it's clean. It's got air permits and everything. Um, but it is a really interesting concept.
And here we turned it into a dog park.
There's not just recycling of the most common things, which is like. Paper, cardboard, uh, cans, metal, uh, glass sometimes. But there's complicated things that I don't think people have straight answers on about batteries, light bulbs. I mean, I tried to dispose of a television a couple of years ago and it was hell to figure out how to properly dispose of a television.
I think the county has a pretty good resource on the where do I take my page? Where do I take my? A lot of stuff it does, yeah.
We're not careful. The default answer is Capital Forest.
Yeah.
Well, I think I think, uh, something about, um. Being a little bit more proactive in that regard would be useful in terms of the education. I'm also just interested in what we can do to facilitate. A, uh, more effective coordinated recycling program in the county, like. I know like this, this, uh, when I was, when I was, uh. Figured out a recycling program for our business, which is downtown, we were shocked to find out how much of what we did was like. Theoretically recyclable, but wasn't actually accessible anywhere remotely. And like things that I I would just end up taking recycling home so that we could get it in a different, different jurisdiction that would recycle it and. Yeah, I just, I I would love to pursue, uh, a more, uh, comprehensive and more effective recycling program. That actually gets at the goals of what their cycling programs for. I don't know where that sits in here, but that's, that's, that's a better be in my mind for some time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I wonder if we could do something for on fifty-eight, we have an example from the utilities chapter. This one's focused on reducing organic waste, but I wonder if we could do a new utilities policy that says something like educate and promote. Programs to, uh, improve recycling. Infrastructure and, um, outreach.
Yeah, maybe, uh, coordinated recycling, uh, infrastructure and outreach.
Coordination.
I just call it programs.
Recycling programs?
Yeah.
Okay.
How much of our county is covered by LeMay and how much is covered by waste management?
Uh, Republic Services has, that's what I mean, a contract for Thurston County.
It seems to change every year.
But I'm not sure what the cities are doing.
It's all on LeMay, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
And then, uh, the developed targeted community outreach campaigns for recycling and composting materials, sounds like the sort of thing that we're already talking about here. That's, that's the, the suggested IP from, uh, TCAT. But it's essentially what you've been describing in terms of like getting this stuff that exists already and getting it to people proactively. Because again, otherwise they just take it to Capital Forest.
And I wonder, I wonder if that, um, recommendation from TCAT from the earlier comment. In the italics, they said, uh, to add expand current food waste educations such as the Thurston County's Waste Less Food Program. I don't see any problem with adding that to I P C L forty-five, that italicized section.
Sounds good.
That's something that said the city of Olympia. Hired some new technology that like as they're pulling your recycling out, they scan it and make sure you did it properly.
I'm not talking about that.
So did we want to finish fifty-nine?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is provide free technical assistance to local businesses and reducing the carbon intensity of their supply chains. We do have something similar for developing an education campaign. For new energy and building codes and we did edit that earlier. Let me pull up how we edited that language. We just added training onto that I P C L forty, but I wonder if that. Instead of free technical assistance to local businesses, I wonder if that new policy we talked about earlier of. Develop targeted community outreach to reduce consumption of carbon intensive goods and services. Applies, it applies to businesses, it applies to regular folks who don't own a business. How are we feeling?
I mean, I agree with that, but they're talking about their supply chains, how to educate them about their supply chains and.
I don't know that the county's called that's pretty.
Yeah. I know at the Department of Ecology, we had teams that would do this, but they were dedicated teams of engineers. That would go out and give people's processes.
So that sounds like, that seems like an education campaign could try and, yeah, in cases, point people to those teams of engineers, yeah.
I think they might have disbanded that team because nobody would take them on it, because they're worried about bringing the regulators.
Uh, what about, we have that.
Conservation District, non-regulatory.
Conservation District shall.
We could also do collaborate with Thurston Green Business. And similar organizations, uh, to provide free technical assistance.
Yeah, yeah, and then we can message, we can specify the reducing carbon intensity of their supply chains there. Yeah.
Chamber show. Yeah, right.
And punt that, um, to the people who can actually, who are actually qualified for it, but but make it a priority.
So we'll add a new IP action, collaborate with Thurston Green Business and similar organizations. To provide free technical assistance to local businesses and reducing their carbon, the carbon intensity of their supply chain. And you guys are really darned.
Yeah, I gotta get to the rest of this agenda before they.
We did once as many as we did last time. I just wanna point that out.
Yeah, she had to drop off. She sent me a text about two minutes, three minutes ago. Okay. Thank you, Amelia. Um, your efforts are appreciated. Next on our agenda is a staff update from Derek Day.
So, um, our big staff update, I think at this point is that we have zero vacancies. Zero.
I see that.
Everybody's, everybody's still. Yep, for now. And we're gonna put up a couple of days since our last. And that's my, that's my biggest update. We are going to be working on some reord between, um, the. The long range planning side, we work on and building and developing. Create some extra capacity amongst those teams, so, um, I'm not. I can't remember if this, I'm allowed to fully share, but there will be some significant rework. And I think it's gonna, it's gonna really help. Other than that, I don't think I have any staff updates.
Okay. Maya, I see that you're still with us.
Still here, um, nothing new this week on Thurston twenty forty-five. Uh, the Planning Commission did receive a memo for tonight. I was not expecting to get to that memo, but when we do finally get through climate. We will pick up on that memo for the rest of the Thurston twenty forty-five items, so. Looking forward to that in the next week or, um, in the next meeting or two, so that's it for me.
If that's all you had for tonight's meeting, you probably should have amended the agenda to put it sooner. Or suggested that we amend the agenda, I should say.
I've been taking notes.
Thank you. Well, that's much appreciated. Um, calendar with agenda items. Intensive attendance, uh, June eighteen, are we? Planning to have a quorum. I will, uh, likely not be here that evening. I'm scheduled to be out of town.
Will Daniel?
What's up?
Will Daniel be here?
I believe Daniel will be here. I might not be.
Six four quorum.
Okay. Um, looks like we'll have a quorum. Hopefully we have a chair or vice chair and otherwise someone will get drafted in a service.
Who's the procedure say it's nose goat?
I will be present if I'm not on a plane.
Okay, uh, July second. Is anybody expecting not to be here? Fourth at the end of the week, probably just. Four day week for most people.
Well, we got a public hearing.
Uh, anything for the good of the order? Further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah. Sorry to keep you a little late. We're in there.
I'm so good at what you do.
Nice to meet everybody.
Nice to meet you, Von.